Thank you, Sean. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 26, 2021, Meeting of the Milton Select Board. I have a couple of things to read. Why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? Do we have the? Do we have the display, Jennifer? Great, thank you. If everyone would please join us in saying Pledge of Allegiance. For which it stands, one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So we're going to begin with reciting our usual reminder to everyone about our virtual meeting. So on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law to enable public bodies to carry out their responsibilities while adhering to public health recommendations regarding social distancing. The executive order relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body provides adequate alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body. In this case, public access is being provided through Zoom as set forth on the meeting notice for the meeting. My name is Katie Conlon. I'm the new Chair of the Board, and I'm going to introduce the other members. Normally, my preference is to have everybody introduce themselves, but the instructions I hear from Kevin say the Chair must announce the names. So I will introduce, we have Vice Chair Arthur Doyle, Member Richard Wells, Melinda Collins. Our fifth member is Michael Zulus. He's going to be joining us a little bit late. He may be able to dial in on the telephone and but then will be joining us in person about half hour from now. We also have with us our Town Administrator. Oh, I see Mike now. So, Mr. Zulus. Mike, I'm just announcing the participants. And we also have our Town Administrator. We're just announcing who's here. Rolo. We have our Town Administrator, Michael Dennehy, Jennifer McCullar of the Select Board Office, and Susie Stewart, who will be joining us as a town employee on Tuesday. The meeting is being recorded and will be made available online for free after the meeting has concluded. Milton Access Television is recording tonight's meeting, and Cindy Christen advised us that she is recording tonight. Before we get started, we have a couple of changes we'd like to make to the agenda. No objection from the members. I will propose that we defer items 10, which relates to the airplane issues for our alternatives. We're still working on that, and we'll have an update at a later date. And item 25, which is the Milton Arts Center release and is not ready for this evening. And also, I'll propose number 37, which relates to release of executive session minutes, because that would follow, but I think maybe a lengthy executive session. So I think we should do that at a later date. Do we have any objection to deferring those items? Seeing none. And we have some representatives from Good Energy, who I understand are going to join, is that 8:00 PM? Is that still the case? Okay, so that is item. It's an item 16 on our agenda, so we may take that a little bit out of order depending on where we get by 8:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is Memorial Day observance, and we just would like to thank our Veterans Agent Kevin Cook for all the work he's done preparing that. Memorial Day is Monday, May 31, and Milton's observance will be held this year at 11:00 AM at the cemetery. There's no parade this year because of COVID, but we are going to be having a ceremony at the cemetery. And the featured speaker this year is a Milton resident, Rod Fritz, a radio personality and a veteran. So hopefully, as many people as possible will be able to join us at the cemetery or will be able to watch it online through Milton Access TV. We're now at public comments. Do we have anyone this evening would like to address the board at public comment? And Jennifer, if we could put up our usual display for public comments, if you have that handy. Okay, I see three hands. Thank you very much. Okay. My participant list, the first hand I saw was Cindy Christiansen, followed by, I only have a first name of Philip and then Lyndalee Sheridan. So Dr. Christiansen.
Cindy Christiansen, 59 Collmar Street, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. This Friday, some of my national aviation work with colleague Darlene Yapley will be published in the Airport Noise Report, a longstanding weekly newsletter on litigation, regulations, and technologic developments related to aviation. The publication's primary audience includes airport and aviation industry professionals, elected officials, aviation consultants, and attorneys specializing in airport noise cases. Darlene and I are two of the co-founding members of Aviation Impact Communities Alliance, a national group that creates position papers and briefings on aviation legislative issues and priorities. Recently, our alliance led the 46 community response to the Airlines for America's Federal Register comments regarding the Neighborhood Environmental Survey. And we wrote a technical report on alternative noise metrics that was referenced by the Congressional Quiet Skies Caucus in its letter to Administrator Dixon in March of this year. In this Friday's publication, we addressed the recent announcement by Administrator Dixon that the FAA will use the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service to assist in the design and implementation of a policy framework and process for revisiting aviation noise. We make several key points, including that an independent organization such as the National Academy should not merely assist, but should lead the effort in order to achieve process and outcome independence and credibility. That the FAA should not preemptively make decisions and assumptions about potential solutions, as Dixon did in his letter. That affected communities must be included and regarded as significant stakeholders in the process to develop new aviation noise policies instead of simple tokenism, as is our typical role. That the FAA should take quick and decisive action to update its noise policy, lengthening studies, and further delays are not acceptable. These key points and others, along with supporting evidence for each, are included in our report. The alliance shares our reports and position papers upon request. Now bringing it back home, like the FAA, this Select Board claims to have support for your often misguided positions and your often flawed recommendations by using different degrees of citizen tokenism instead of inclusion, transparency, and citizen partnership. If your unilateral approach to public input on Milton's aviation problems changes, I know there are many knowledgeable local residents who would be willing to advise this board and to provide consultant services for your MCAC representative in a unified effort to reduce Milton's aviation problems.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Christiansen. The next speaker is Philip.
Hi, this is Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive in Milton. I didn't know what Cindy was going to say, but I think my comments worked very well with hers. I am concerned that ANAC, the Aviation Noise Advisory Committee, has not met. I'm not aware that it has been disbanded. I don't know how many of the current members are still members or how many have resigned. But I'd like to volunteer myself for a revived ANAC. I think it's important that we have other voices reviewing the work of the MCAC rep, reviewing the work of the Select Board, and ensuring that the outcome of the work of the MCAC rep and the Select Board truly represent the majority of Milton residents. I was alarmed on Sunday, when I was outside working in my yard, when I heard a 27 departure go over my house. Normally, when there's a west wind, we get those rare days when it's quiet. And particularly on Sunday, it's nice on Sunday morning before the sea breeze kicks in and we start getting for our arrivals. But to see a 27 departure and to hear a 27 departure going over my house is truly unusual. And it wasn't just one, it was many. I remember that back in June or July of 2019, the Select Board and the MCAC rep recommended a change in the flight path for 27 departures, where those departures would turn at Wiley as opposed to Kira. Kira is where they traditionally turned, and what that did was it avoided going directly over Milton. I could hear the 27 departures, but they were in the distance. It was not annoying. On Sunday, it was annoying, and I don't know why our MCAC rep and our Select Board would choose to suggest that turning over Wiley would make any sense when that that move causes the aircraft to fly over Milton rather than avoiding Milton. And Judy Gunderson posted, she posted a letter in the October 31, 2019 Milton Times, where she criticized the board for not allowing public comment. I think the board, the MCAC rep, need to welcome public comment. I think that ANAC needs to be revived so that there can be increased citizen participation in these recommendations. The suggestion that aircraft turn at Wiley is a huge mistake, and Milton will suffer with this for a long time. It's enough that I get for our. It's terrible that the Select Board and the MCAC rep have now gifted to me 27 departures. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lyndalee Sheridan.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak. My name is Lyndalee Sheridan, and I live at 57 Clifton Road. I'm here on behalf of the We Are Milton members tonight, Kathy Fagan, Richard Wells, Brian Kelly, Gary Kelly, Eric Miller, and Glenn Pavlicek, to share some really great news. I'm happy to announce that the Milton Music Festival will happen as scheduled on the last weekend of June, Saturday, June 26, and Sunday, June 27, for our Celtic Sunday. As you know, the state of emergency will be lifted on June 15. And thankfully, we had put into place many tentative plans. Last night, we made it official. Saturday evening, the doors will open at 4:00 PM. I didn't say where. This is at Hutchinson Field. So when I say doors will open, the festivities will begin, I guess is more appropriate, at 4:00 PM, and music begins at 5:00 with a band named Cherry Orchard that we had a few years ago that was very, very well received, followed by a great presentation of a very popular band, The Big Party Orchestra. As usual, we will have food and drinks available for purchase and activities for kids. On Sunday, our doors open at noon, and the bands will begin at 1:00. As of now, we have several bands already registered to perform. That's Aaron's Melody, the Dooley Brothers, Phineon Sons, and Kerrig's Fancy. We will also have free parking at Font Barn and shuttle buses back and forth. If you have any questions, check our website, Milton Music Fest, which is being updated almost as we speak on an ongoing basis. And also our Facebook page, We Are Milton, Milton Music Fest and Celtic Sunday. So, Richard, did I leave anything off?
Oh, that was fine. That was awesome. She's the chair, just by the way. She didn't tell you that. Thank you, Lyndalee.
Well, it's an amazing team when you hear all that happens with just a few people that, you know, make this happen every year. So our response has already been really positive, and we have banners ready to go up at all the schools and the parks, so.
The fireworks begin at 10:00 PM on Saturday night.
Yes, I did forget that. Thank you. That's important. So thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else tonight for Citizen Speak? Last chance. I see no other hands, so we can take down our screen. And we'll go on to our next agenda item, unless anyone would like to remove public speak response up to the early part of the meeting. Was the board's preference? That would be item 31.
Madam Chair, just a point. Is Mr. Darby, I see him on the list. Is he scheduled to speak?
No, we deferred item 10, which related to for our alternatives.
Okay, I'm good then.
I mean, you know, I will say a couple of things with respect to what Mr. Joe Henning said. I don't know if we want to do it now or do it later in the meeting. It's.
What's the board's preference? Anyone? Arthur, Melinda, Richard?
I prefer now, Madam Chair. I'd like to hear what Mr. Zulus has to say.
Okay, let's move item 31 up then. Mr. Zulus.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things to, in response to Mr. Joe Henning's comments. With respect to runway 27, the board never recommended a change to the departure path. And this is something that was the subject of much, not much, but some some statements that were made earlier and some things that were written. And Mr. Joe Henning referenced that there was a letter written saying that there wasn't public comment. Thankfully, we have video, we have minutes, we have everything that shows that there was public comment. There was public comment that went into that. And so there was no recommended change to the departure path, rather because of the Select Board's desire and stated desire to become involved in the conversation about runway 27. We were able to achieve a result where a planned change to runway 27 by Boston was not carried out. And so because of our involvement, as we had intended with respect to runway 27, it helped Milton, because it helped not having those departure paths. And I would point out, just since Mr. Joe Henning mentioned public comment and such, Mr. Joe Henning published a letter where he said, he made the false statement, "Why has there been no public meeting regarding the town's response to the runway 4L environmental assessment?" That was not true. There were at least four meetings, public meetings of the Select Board, September 16, 2020, October 6, 2020, during which public comment was solicited, November 17, 2020, and November 18, 2020, during which the town's response to runway 4L, the runway 4L environmental assessment, was discussed in public and public comment was solicited. So I think it's important for the public to know that there are public meetings, there is public comment, there is public input, and no one is making these decisions on their own. We're getting public input on it. So that's my only thought on that.
The only thing I would add is that if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the proposals being considered under the MIT study will actually improve the situation for Milton with respect to runway 27. Anyone else? Public comment response?
Madam Chair, just a brief moment. I just want to follow up on both of your comments. Since the beginning of my 50th year here, I don't sit on the airplane noise committees, but I do listen intently, and I've learned a lot more in the past five years than I ever expected to know about airplane noise over the town of Milton. But I can't say this. To Mr. Joe Henning's comments, his underlying tone is that somehow this is being perpetrated purposely by members of the board against him, and even as MCAC rep, and I could say this particularly to the two of you, Mr. Zulus and Ms. Conlon. He and Mr. Darby, no one has worked harder on this, both with our local as well as our federal and regional partners, on working to make airplane noise lesser for the town of Milton than you have. And just the thought that somehow we would perpetrate something that would inflict harm on our resident of this community is something I take personally and something that, as you all know, I have dedicated my life to protecting people, not harming people. Certainly not something that this board or any member of this board would ever even conceive, never mind put forward. So thank you for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Anyone else for public comment response? And if not, we will go on to item 5, which is a COVID-19 update. We have a couple of items on this topic. Town Hall reopening. Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Happy to announce that next Tuesday, not only will we have Susie Stewart sitting in the Executive Administrative Assistant Chair, but we will also reopen the doors to the public for the first time in quite some time. We had been running Town Hall the last couple of weeks by appointment only. That was very successful. We have some senior tax work-off representatives, greeters at Town Hall and accommodating those folks that have made appointments. So effective this coming Tuesday, June 1, and going forward for normal business hours, which are Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 1:30 PM, Milton Town Hall is open for all business. Very thankful to be able to say that.
Well, that's good news. The next two items are state of emergency and date and meetings of boards and committees in person. We wrote after June 15, because that was the latest guidance that we had received, but just yesterday, we heard that the governor has filed some legislation that would extend that date until September 1, and would also give the legislature an opportunity to look at whether there might be any permanent changes to the open meeting law that would either allow a hybrid model or some form of remote participation. So the long and short of it is that we're going to have to wait and see what happens with the legislation. I see our town council has joined the line, and Mr. Freytek, I don't know if you wanted to add anything on this topic.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board. Kevin Freytek, Office of Town Council. I don't have anything else to add. You summed it up quite well.
All right, so this is really something that we'll be monitoring. It will have some updates. I know that Mr. Dennehy had notified all of the boards and committees that June 15 was the date by which everyone would have to go back to in-person meetings, but now that we have some updated information, if word has gone out, Mr. Dennehy to all of the other boards and committees, that this is something we'll have more information on as it develops.
Correct, Madam Chair. And as you can understand, with the 40Bs and the busy slate of boards and committee meetings in town, there was some maneuvering of capacity issues and space issues. Council on Aging has been cleared both by Christine Stanton, the Director, and our Health Director to accommodate larger public meetings. Should the Select Board give up their second and fourth Wednesday to accommodate one of the zoning board of appeal, public hearings. So we'll work through all that, our coordinating schedules, and we'll follow the guidance. Again, the legislation has been filed, but not passed yet, so we'll follow that closely. Thank you.
Okay, anyone, anything else under COVID?
Madam Chair, just quickly, just to follow up to what you said, and Mr. Dennehy, I did talk briefly last week with Rep. Driscoll, 10 days ago, and he brought this up before it even happened, that it does seem to be a lot of support in the legislature for extending this. And as you said, Madam Chair, maybe even making it permanent, because I think one of the benefits we've taken during this past 18 months is that Zoom rarely helps keep government rolling. And I think it's definitely a tool that should remain in our toolbox going forward. That's all I have, and I am excited to think that there will.
You're on.
I just muted myself. Some legislation movement. So thank you for that as well. He was, Rep. Driscoll did seem very supportive of it, so.
Okay, that's good to know. It seems like there's an interest in the public being able to continue participating at the level they've been participating at, but it does create some logistical issues for Town Hall and the staff. So more to come on that topic. Yes, Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, thank you. Based on Rich's comment, we as a board have some thoughts on that to convey to Representative Driscoll, particularly where he is seemingly supportive of this, or what would you advise, Rich? Because I think with New England weather alone, in some instances, it's a safety matter.
I agree. I just, I think this has been one of the most efficient things. I mean, for you, Arthur, this is all you know since your election to this board. You have been sitting in front of a screen since you got here, but I'll do this, Madam Chair, if it's all right with you. I'll reach out to him tomorrow and ask him if he'd like to hear from us, and maybe we can discuss it just briefly on our next agenda in the fall, as to whether or not we may want to put something in writing to support it or echo, even discuss it, and then if so, then we'll put it forward.
Sure.
If that's okay with you.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan. It's probably something we want to give a little thought to. And in Mr. Dennehy and the people who are involved in administering Zoom for us, which has changed now that Hillary Wade is no longer with us, might want to give us some thoughts too on logistical issues that we may encounter.
And if I might, Madam Chair, just also include Milton Access TV, what their bandwidth is to be able to manage so many in-person meetings and then also help manage the Zoom as well. So we'll definitely have conversations as we get closer. But I appreciate both the in-person and the remote stuff.
All right, so we'll add that to the agenda for the night. Okay, the next item on our agenda then is a discussion with Allison Quinn, our Assistant Town Planner, about a grant application that the planning staff is applying for. And then Allison is going to stay for items 7 and 8 as well. So.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Select Board. I hope everyone. I just wanted to share with you, we are moving forward with an application to the community, One Stop for Growth. It's kind of a, all of the different opportunities to apply for grant funding through different state agencies. They have changed that, so you apply once during the year. We got feedback from our letter of interest that indicated that we should focus our efforts down in Milton Village, because there's a lot of momentum in that area. Tim Zerwinski is working with an outside consultant on design guidelines. We know that the recently stimulated some interest in the area. So that having been said, we've been also made aware that the Naposet River Trail, there's a lot of funding available. The hope is to try and find clever ways to connect to that in different spaces. I know that the Boston Planning and Development Agency recently was awarded a grant through MAPC to expand or look at the opportunity to expand the Naposet River Trail down in the Matapan area along the Ponser River. So we're going to capitalize on this opportunity, we hope. So the grant will be to look at the feasibility of using the existing but unused former railroad bridge that connects Milton Landing to Ventura Park and Lower Mills. Uh, the, the grant is just simply that one bridge could be used. Um, right now, we feel like that's our best option to get funded, uh, and.
Allison, you're, you're breaking up a little bit. We're having some trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so Marina Fernandez from, um, our own engineering department, uh, put us in touch with a few consultants. We expect to get some feedback on cost. We have letters of support. That part. The newly elected, um, Senator Collins is supportive. Uh, we've gotten letters of support from the city of Boston and the Boston Planning and Development Agency. And we're, we're still speaking with some of, um, the mother interested parties in the Nippon Water Shed, the Greenway Council. Everyone seems to be supportive. So what they're asking tonight is that the select board, uh, take a vote to allow the application for, uh, community for one stop, uh, community for one stop for growth to the state on behalf of the town of Milton.
Thank you, Allison. You were breaking up a little bit at the end there, but I, I think we got the gist of what the application relates to. Does anyone have questions or comments for Assistant Town Planner Allison Quinn? Yes, Mr. Wells and then Mr. Denny.
I, I didn't, Michael, Mr. Denny, I were both on the sidewalk. I, I want to thank Allison and, and, uh, Marina for all their work they did, bringing the city of Boston, the Nippon River, the Nippon Water Shed and DC out of the table. I think this is just another enhancement for that area and all the work that the MPIC started back in twenty fifteen. And I want to thank her because I was, as I'm sure Michael was truly impressed with the excitement that, um, the partnering agencies had for funding of this. So I think this is definitely a win. And thank Allison and all the staff for this.
Mr. Dennehy?
Yeah, I, I echo Mr. Wells's sentiment. We took a good walk around the building. I think the date on that bridge was sometime in the seventeen hundreds, if, if I'm correct. It's an old bridge, but, uh, we had a DCR representative there that, they're in a butter as they own the island a, across the way where the, where the bridge empties out to. It would be, it'd be a great addition, um, to the, to the harbor walk. Often down there at night and you can, it, it's very highly used and the, again, the enthusiasm showed by, by the partners. Um, I will say Marina Fernandez has worked on a lot of grants like this before. And the work that Allison and Tim are doing, um, on, uh, all things planning and community development is, 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 is top notch. So just want to thank them for getting this to this point.
They are a great one and two lineup. The two of them, they're like, if one doesn't miss it, the other one gets it. I mean, it's just, I, I've said this in previous meetings, I, I never thought, and I want to call John Cannon, the ConCon as well, that I've never seen such enthusiasm and commitment to bettering that area of our community that has been in existence and used, underused going back to that since the eighteen hundreds.
All right. Anything further, or if not, but anyone like to make a motion relating to the grant application?
Um, I'll move to approve a letter of support for the community one stop grant application and to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Uh, if not, all in favor, we'll do a roll call as, as we must in a virtual environment. Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Ms. Quinn is going to stay with us for seven and eight. I should have mentioned that, um, that Town Planner Tim Zerwinski is attending, uh, the forty B hearing tonight for five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue, which is why he's not able to be here today. But Mr. Doyle, Mr. Dennehy, and I did have a call with Mr. Zerwinski to go over the status on these, um, the three that are listed. One is for the P E L stage, which is seven twenty-eight Randolph Ave. And the other two, as we know, are well in process before the, the Board of Appeals. So seven twenty-eight Randolph Avenue, we have a draft, a little bit of updated draft from, uh, Mr. Zerwinski for the board to take a look at and to offer some additional comments. It's filed back till I believe June twenty-first. Is that correct? Thank you. Um, so we have a little bit of time with this and just looking at it this afternoon, I, I have some minor changes that I think we should make, but does, does anyone want to discuss anything in the letter or, um, offer any comments tonight?
Hey, one question, Madam Chair. I'm talking a lot tonight. I apologize.
Yes.
On, on the comments on seven twenty-eight about the possible use of the dump road, and I think you're the owner here who may remember this. Do you recall, because this has been an issue on the front, do you remember the assistant living file, uh, the assistant living article that was passed probably six years ago at town meeting? I, I know it was, oh yeah, so it fell through, it didn't happen, but maybe, oh, then the answer is well, was access to the dump road part of that proposal? Do, does anyone know that?
I, I don't know offhand, but, but right now the only access to this property is the common driveway.
That's correct.
And the, the dump road access is not a public, it's a gate, it's this gate and it's not being used, it hasn't been used for decades and was only used previously for access to the town dump, as, as you know. So, um, right now that the, on page, I think it's page five, depends on which red line you're looking at, but, um, you know, the, the letter brings out that the only point of access for the project is a driveway that connects to Randolph Ave, a busy state highway. And the applicant should explain in detail how traffic to and from the site can safely navigate this point.
I agree. And the other comment too about the school buses, that's the same as seven eleven. It's the same issue about the safety of a school bus. It's, they're not going to stop at twenty-eight. It's just not going to happen. It's absolutely beyond any safe mode of operation you could even conceive.
Yeah, I agree with you, Richard. That, that's actually one of the comments that I wanted to make is right now we just refer to it as a public street. I think we have to call it out as a busy state highway and it, it will be the exact same issue that it was for the, for the proposal across the street. Uh, Ms. Collins, I think you had your hand raised.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I, I also have a, a few things that, that I, I'd like us to consider, but, um, I, I don't know that we need to do it here, uh, at, at the moment. I, I noted, um, you know, characterizing twenty-eight, I think a little bit more accurately. Um, also, a lack of adequate information, um, in the application to really make a good assessment was something that I, I would like to highlight, and it's, it's a point that needs to be made, uh, I think, over and over again, whenever that happens. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm wondering whether we would like to add some more information about some of the adverse impacts that could, um, could befall, um, you know, abutting properties if, um, if, if some of the, uh, well, the very sparse proposals, um, came, came to be. Um, I, I was glad to see that, that there was a point made, um, in this third iteration about a commitment to not blasting because of that, you know, it being a landfill and, and things like that. So tho- those are some of my thoughts. But, uh, but I, I know that we also received, uh, comments from the butters and, uh, and thought that there were some, some things that we may want to consider.
Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, just a couple of follow-up points. There is a rental pool not too far from the far left rear corner of the proposed development. And in addition to checking on, uh, the distance from the outer edge of that rental pool, might want to, uh, wonder with respect to excavation, whether that could have a deleterious impact upon the existing of rental pool because of the way in which, uh, subsurface waters flow and may or may not be replaced. Also, uh, with respect to the bottom right-hand corner that was staked out on our sidewalk, um, we might check to see if, uh, where that stands relative to encompassing from the wetland on the opposite side of the, uh, dump access road. Just again, to double check and make sure that everything is in order. And finally, um, on the point of gas that was made, we want to recall that there is a, uh, utility station, gas utility station further up the road. And, um, we want to make sure that there's no negative impact, uh, because of any excavation on, uh, that facility or the pipeline.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in terms of process, uh, is the idea now to put either this draft or a modified draft up on, uh, the website so that we could solicit, uh, additional comment from residents?
Yes, although it sounds like we have a number of comments that we want to incorporate. So I think probably the revised draft might make sense. But my only other thought was that I think that Attorney McEttrick on behalf of her clients submitted some good points, uh, in a letter that we haven't yet fully incorporated into this draft. So I'd like to see some of those points expanded upon in this letter. Um, we have until the twenty-first, so we, we meet next on the ninth and then the twenty-third. So we, we may want to, if necessary, schedule a meeting just for this prior to the twenty-first, but would the board be, um, agreeable to getting a draft, revised draft for the next meeting on the ninth and then posting it at that time? Or do you think that's too late?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So just, just one follow-up, because I'll forget, just to follow up to Mr. Doyle, to Arthur's comments. That's not just any gas line. That's the Duke Energy High Pressure Line that runs from Boston all the way up East. I mean, that is one serious gas line. That's not your average main running down Adam Street. That's.
The old Algonquin line.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's the old Algonquin line. You're dating yourself up. I, it's Duke. That's what it was. It was, it's all the way up from behind Cunningham Park, all the way across Chikatob and all the way up there. So, um, it runs right through there. So that's a good point. Just, that was my, but I agree with you, Madam Chair. I think that's a good idea.
Pardon me, Madam Chair. Uh, just in terms of process, um, you know, I, I, I wonder if June ninth might be a little bit tight to do it. And I would, I would be comfortable, uh, authorizing, um, the town administrator to put a draft of the letter as revised, um, by the town planner, including, uh, the comments from this board and including the comments from Attorney McEttrick. Recognizing that it's a draft and it's subject to change, but I, I would be comfortable having that be put up sooner and before the June ninth meeting.
I second that.
But yeah, that seems reasonable so that we, um, Ms. Quinn, I, I, I'm sure you've heard some of this discussion tonight. I, I took some notes, but you may have notes as well and hopefully with over the, maybe by mid next week or end of next week, we could get something out.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Collins.
Um, would it be helpful if we, uh, because I have my own notes, just forward them also to our assistant town planner?
Uh, yes. Should they go to you, Allison, or to Tim?
You can send them to me and, and I can, uh, sit with him and, you know, reverberate what, what was spoken of and share the notes so he has some context.
Does it make sense for a, a member of this board to delegate a member of this board to kind of oversee that draft to get up on the website?
Uh, probably you have to work with, we're, we're, work with the planning staff.
I'll volunteer.
Ms. Collins wants to volunteer that.
A second.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Dennehy, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I don't have it in front of me, but the, the six ninety-three, seven eleven Randolph Ave forty B proposal was the testimony from Mastard. Mastard owns that highway. Um, was that, was the testimony from Mastard? Because I think it's very applicable because any changes to the roadway has to come from Mastard and, and their opinion, um, as it, as it is their jurisdiction.
Well, that's a few years ago. I know, I know there was testimony from Richard, I mean, it was the police chief about traffic issues. Richard, do you remember for six ninety-three, seven eleven Randolph Ave, what was before the Board of Appeals? Did Mastard testify in that case?
I believe Mast, uh, we're talking on traffic. Yes, Mastard did. I did. And then after I left, Chief King did, Chief, Chief Grant and Joe Lynch, because the, one of the things I recall listening tonight, Bo, Randolph Ave, particularly in the AM commute is a term I never heard before, was there is what's called zero hiccup time. That's the space you would have between one car to another car and that it rated a zero, that there's so many vehicles there. I believe everyone was there, um, during that, including Mastard.
Right. And then what, what impact does the Route twenty-eight car to study have on this and vice versa? So, uh, um, I'm sure Chase Berkeley has reached out to Donnie Daly at Mastard, but I'll just follow up on that. And I think their comments, um, should be part of, part of this P E L as well.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Denny. And what, didn't we do that for one of the prior?
We did. We did for Blue Hills, Blue Hills Parkway, I believe. Uh, it was a, a thought process that it was, uh, right turn in and right turn out only. Uh, the commissioner of DCR didn't want crosswalks down there, understandably. He recognized that as the, the gateway to the reservation. So there was input from DCR on, on the Ice House.
All right. So, Mr. Denny, if you'll take care of that Mastard outreach and then Ms. Collins will work with the planning staff. And anyone should send any further comments to Allison Quinn or Tim Zerwinski. For five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue and the Ice House, which is four eighty-five, forty-seven Blue Hills Parkway, just briefly, um, stormwater peer review is the current topic and a stormwater is a very big issue for five eighty-two Blue Hill Ave. And it's also an issue for the Parkway. So, uh, the peer reviews are presenting tonight and we'll, we'll all have an opportunity to watch the tape if we'd like. And then Mr. Zerwinski can give us an update, but that's currently one of the, one of the bigger issues that, um, they're handling. Both of these projects have been going through some revisions. We, I can't remember offhand the number of units that Blue Hill Avenue has been reduced to, but it's, it has come down a bit and it's been a redesign of the project. And Mr. Zerwinski was going to send me a link that I did not come over this afternoon, but I'm sure he was quite busy. So we can, um, we'll get that to everyone, just a link with the latest design and drawings of what the, what the projects look like, uh, including Kenton Ave and, um, any changes that have been made for East Milton. So, um, so that everyone has this. There will be an opportunity for the boards to testify if we'd like to at some future time. Mr. Zerwinski advised Mr. Doyle and me that it, that's to be determined at this stage, but that we should let him know if we would like to weigh in on either of those proposals or the others when they get to that stage. One thought that I had might be that we might want to coordinate that with the planning board because some members of the planning board have already been offering comments at the ZBA hearings and, and they're weighing in on specific issues that they have some expertise in, like design. So it may be that we want to try to coordinate some of that with the planning board. It's just one thought, but I wanted to see what the rest of the board thought on that. Mr. Wells.
I, I'd be comfortable, Madam Chair, to discuss this and, and have you speak for us or, or the vice chair speak for the board. I think one, one voice for us. I, I wouldn't want to see us speaking individually. I, I'd rather be one strong message. And I think that should come from you. And I'm not saying that to put, I, I, I believe structurally and, and efficiently, it should come from the, from the chair speaking on behalf of all of us if we all supported.
Okay. And given the number, then we may get to a stage where we might want to delegate it to other members of the board. But I mean, I, I would be happy to do that. Uh, we just want to have, you know, a broad agreement on what our comments on the latest proposals are because there, there have been some pretty significant changes in a couple of them. So I think once we get the link from Tim, we should ask everyone to, uh, take a look at them. And, and some of us have probably been seeing some of the proceedings through Zoom or through M A T V. So, um, we can continue to do that and, and coordinate with the planning board, I think, so that we're all, assuming there's agreement, we're all on the same page might, would be helpful. You know, there may, maybe a situation where there's a difference of opinion between the boards and that would be fine, but if we're all saying the same thing, it might make sense to coordinate with them. And Mr. Zulus, did you have your hand up?
No, I, I, I just agree with, uh, Mr. Wells on that in terms of process, having one voice speak and whether it be the, the chair, the vice chair, or, or a member delegated by the chair, the vice chair. I think that's a, that's a good process for us.
Okay. Anything else then on the forty B proposals?
Madam Chair, just for clarification, I'm, I'm forwarding that email from Tim. It's a, it's a link to the updated plans.
Oh, great.
From, yeah, they went from a hundred and eighteen units to ninety-two units.
Thank you. All right then. We'll move on to the next item, uh, which is number eight, which is, uh, as Mr. Dennehy would say, a good news story for the town and for the Affordable Housing Trust. And Ms. Quinn, would you like to brief the board on that? And then Ms. Collins or Mr. Doyle, who are members of the housing committee, might also like to speak to it.
I'd be happy to. So the, uh, proceeds of the sale of the affordable units at one ninety-nine Church Street, um, which were the units that were tied to the multi-development project, uh, those. those, the proceeds are now on our vault. So what needs to happen next is that the Select Board needs to formally accept those proceeds.
I'll make a motion. I'll run out of the ballot. I'll make a motion to accept deposits of $1,777.7928 and $200,062.86 from the Polte Homes to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? There's probably several people on the Housing Committee and the Housing Trust that we should thank, including Melinda Collins, our own member, and Mr. Doyle, who's also on the Housing Committee. And I don't want to, if I name them, I'm sure I'll forget them. Melinda, maybe you should name them.
I thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I don't have necessarily comment, but I think that some of the biggest thanks goes to Julie Kramer and Tom Callahan from the Affordable Housing Trust, because they really spearheaded working with the Department of Housing and Community Development to get these units produced and also to negotiate with Polte Homes in order to get the sale, you know, basically that delta in the sale price into the Affordable Housing Trust. And that resulted because the planning board gave them relief from their special permit. And they just, they did a tremendous job of getting those units really ready and also a small trust set aside for any, you know, needs that they'll have in the future. So that you can't, you can't set an affordable unit up any better. And I think we all wish our new homeowners a lot of luck and happiness in Milton.
And I don't know if you mentioned her, but I think Kathleen O'Donnell of the Planning Board also gets some thanks for her work on this matter, too.
I didn't, but thank you. Yes, she gave some legal advice.
Madam Chair? I'm just looking at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. So it looks like that will triple the Affordable Housing Trust balance, those deposits.
Yeah, it's a substantial contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust. She give the trust some real resources to start being able to do more work in our community. All right, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? And if not, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Or Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Go ahead and get those checks deposited, Allison.
Will do. And I'm sure Tim and Julie Kramer and Tom have already come up with some great ways to spend them.
I'm sure they're already thinking about it, yes.
By Friday? I'm only kidding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you also for all of your contributions. Allison's been working with the Housing Trust and the Housing Committee. So Allison, we need to include you in the thank yous.
She's a rock star. You're a rock star, Allison Quinn.
Yep.
Have a great night, you guys.
Thank you. Okay, it's almost 8 o'clock, and I see we have a couple of people from Good Energy. Are we waiting for others from Good Energy, Mr. Dennehy?
No, I believe we have Ms. Mark and Mr. O'Rourke here.
Okay, I'm thinking we should maybe consider moving up item 16, if that works for the rest of the board, and then we'll come back to item 9, which may be a longer discussion than 16. All right, then we will move to 16, which is a discussion about community energy aggregation. We're joined by John O'Rourke and Daria Mark of Good Energy. Good evening, John, and good evening, Daria.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and thank you for letting us come before you tonight, board members. We have a very short presentation for you. The original purpose of our meeting tonight was to give you an update on the bid that we were supposed to have today. What happened with that was we had a situation where a couple of the suppliers that we wanted in the bid, one was not prepared to give us executable pricing for today, and the other felt under a little bit of pressure. Our colleague, Stefano Loretto, who handles supplier relations, we had a meeting. He said, you know, I think we should just ease off for a week, because essentially we want maximum participation in the bid process. And essentially, one of these bidders has been very, very aggressive lately. So we wanted to make sure that they were in the bid. So we've just put it off for a week till June 2nd, and we're hoping to have maximum participation in the bid, certainly to the advantage of the town. And if, what we'll do now is just go over the timeline. And this is our team that you know. There's obviously myself, Stefano Loretto, Daria Mark, Philip Carr, who's our Managing Director, and Patrick Roche, who's our Director of Innovation. We're all going to be working for the town on this to make sure everything is optimal for the launch and for the public outreach to follow. Daria? This is the product mix that the, that the board has chosen. And again, this mix is very consistent with the mix that other communities have recently chosen. The 10% in the standard product gives you a tremendous amount of green energy when you consider the whole of the town and the load of the town. And certainly, anyone who wants a little more green energy can go for the 100% product. And those that feel that the state standard, the renewable portfolio standard is enough, can go for zero additional green energy. So essentially, what this does, it gives everybody an option to participate in the program. Because essentially, what you want in these programs is maximum participation, because that's the way you get the most green energy and the most reliability of the program. Daria? Why don't you take it from here on the timeline?
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for having us today. So when it's, as John said, in June, the timing we're looking for is the bid day will be June 2nd, next Wednesday. And then, once we have a successful bid, we can launch the education and outreach campaign and materials that we've been developing to really reach out to the community and ensure that they're aware of the program. We don't want this to be a surprise. We want to make sure members, customers have a chance to understand the program and choose their participation. We'll have a community presentation tentatively at the end of June 29th. We will set a date and confirm, come back for that. And then there's a required 30-day period where customers, once they've been notified with a letter, can choose. They want to stay with the program, they can leave the program before the program starts. Or, as John was saying, there's 100% option, and there's a basic option in the Milton program that customers can also choose at that time, so that when the enrollment starts, they are in the choice that they prefer. In July, we'll continue with the public outreach. So even though folks already have received their letter, it's still really important to reach out and make sure that any questions that are there get answered and that everyone understands this is a town program. I know there's a lot of conflicting electricity offers out there, and we want to make sure that residents and businesses understand that this is a vetted town program and not some other offer. The program is slated to start in September. So I just want to remind everyone that your electricity bill is for past electricity service. So the electricity bill you opened in September will reflect what you used in August. And so when you are looking for the program start and you're checking your bill, the bill to check would be October's bill for your September electricity. So that's what a September start means. I know sometimes there's a little confusion on that. You know, you open a bill in September, why don't I see my program? It's coming. It's in October for your September electricity use. We have a lot of things planned for outreach. We want to make sure, as I said before, that folks are aware of the program. There's a postcard that goes out to anyone who's eligible for automatic enrollment, and it just says, "Program is coming." And it's signed by Ms. Collins to say that, like, this is a legitimate program by the town, which stands seal in it. We really want to build that trust. There's a customer notification letter. That's a letter that the Department of Public Utilities requires. They vetted it, they checked it, and it contains a lot of great information about the program and along with the rates and ways to leave, should you choose to, and then how to change your option if you'd like. The town will issue a press release about the program. We'll do a community presentation. It'll be virtual. Again, I encourage discussing the values of virtual presentation as far as raising participation. So that's definitely a benefit, and you can record it so that folks who may miss it the night we're showing it live could then watch it later and understand the program. We'll have flyers, there'll be social media. If the library is willing to still do the bookmarks, you know, they've been really supportive of the program. And then the best, most up-to-date resource is the MiltonCE.com website. As things are posted, as things roll out, as the information comes available, including the rates and all the forms that are needed, are posted on the website and available there. And then, John, do you want to come back to this for the bid?
Basically, Michael has been designated as the signatory, I believe. And certainly, given you the ESAs to review, and certainly, your town council should look at those. Again, the, those are ESAs or energy supply agreements, which are signed on the day of the bid with the winning supplier. Essentially, these are reviewed by the Department of Public Utilities. All their attorneys go over them. Our council goes over them. You know, so they're solid documents. We make sure that we have all of the updates that the D P U wants in those documents. And they're the latest, again, reviewed by the D P U.
Great. And then, next up for outreach and education is that, once we have a successful bid and we know that we have the rates, we can launch all the different materials that we've prepared to let residents and businesses know about the program. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Rourke and Ms. Mark, sorry, Ms. Mark, rather.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments for Good Energy representatives? I know Ms. Collins has been working in Mr. Dennehy with the Good Energy representatives. Is there anything that you'd like to add, Ms. Collins?
No, other than they've just been wonderful to work with. And I've learned a lot. And I also want to thank them for the spirit in which they do this, because they really want to work with civic organizations, too, because they realize that there's a depth in the community that they have. And I just think that's great. And I'm sure Mr. Dennehy has something.
Madam Chair, if I could add, I wish all of our client municipalities were as good to work with as the town.
That's good to hear. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Mr. Dennehy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to thank John and Daria. Obviously, John has been working his way through this for the better half of three years, almost four years, if you remember the presentation he gave in the Cronin Room back in late '17, maybe early '18. But a couple of bumps in the road. Just to put a finger on it, it's a very competitive bid. I believe there's 70 million kilowatt hours at stake here as an aggregate for the town. So I think the number that they mentioned the other day is, you know, one-tenth of one penny on the bid, one-tenth of one penny can equal a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So it's a very competitive bid. It's a very fluctuating market. But I've learned a lot about energy and aggregation, and I think we're in good hands here. And hopefully, everything goes well next Wednesday, and we can start our publicity campaign. But a great team to work with, and I want to thank Member Collins for being part of it as well.
Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, picking up on what Mike left in his comments, once the bid is resolved next week and the public campaign begins, might we be posting some of the comments that Daria had in her bullets on the website so that people can go to it as a resource?
Yes, and we'll be promoting the website as well, MiltonCEA.com. So, great question. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Hey, anyone, anything else from Mr. O'Rourke or Ms. Mark?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Coming for you tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in tonight and for all of your work on this project for us.
Have a good night.
Good night. This brings us back now to item 9 on our agenda. And I believe we have Dr. Vias in attendance, as well as Attorney Marion McEttrick. This is the, this relates to the parcel of budding 145 and 167 Lyman Road. And we had a request. We've had a request, and we've talked about it a few times now over the course of several months, to, for a resident who would like to buy this. We did have a site walk in October, and we've had some additional information that's been submitted by Ms. McEttrick. And Ms. Collins has compiled a package of some of the materials that have been provided to us. So I think, I see Ms. McEttrick, I will recognize Ms. McEttrick, if she'd like to make any remarks or bring anything to the attention of the board. I think that Ms. McEttrick and her client are looking for some guidance as to whether the board is interested in moving this forward or not at this stage. And where I stated my position at a prior meeting, I'm going to kind of step back a little bit and let's see what my colleagues' thoughts are. And why don't we go to Ms. Attorney McEttrick first to see if she has any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm Marion McEttrick, and I represent the Vias', who own property right next to this parcel. And they did approach the board before, more than a year ago, generally asking whether the town might be interested in making this surplus so that they would have an opportunity to purchase it. They thought that they could use some of the property to build a garage. They have a tiny garage located under their house. It doesn't accommodate their cars. And, you know, this land is sitting there. There's a good walking path. Neighbors use it. So the most recent communication I sent to the board was on April 25th in response to a request that we show you approximately what the neighbors were thinking about doing. There's a whole process you have to go through if this land were made available. It doesn't mean that these neighbors would have a right to purchase the property. You'd have to go through a bid process. However, just for the, in order to have an idea of what they're thinking about, we sent you a sketch plan, and I wrote a little description in this memo, basically indicating that what they're thinking about is a one-story or one and a half-story garage with a peaked roof, a footprint of 29 feet by 29 feet. It would not be more than 20 feet in height, and they would place the garage in a slab foundation. Exterior finish would match the existing exterior of their home at 167 Lyman Road. It would be electricity, but no plumbing or water. The garage location that they're proposing, at least, would be way at the back of this parcel. And the reason for that would be to provide as much protection for a view of the garage from both of the budding parcels. So one is the Vias', parcel, the other is the neighbor on the other side. This is also in order to leave as many trees as possible on the parcel and, you know, in general, to make it less visible, I guess, from the street. The proposal is to leave at least a 10-foot setback on the side away from the Vias', property, where there is already drainage easement and where there's a walking path. This easement, my concept of it at least, would be that if the town were to convey this property, they would retain an easement to the public to access this strip of land, and they'd also retain a drainage easement permanently. So that's a general description of what they would be thinking about. The sketch plan is not, it's not a survey plan, so it's only approximate. And there are some wetland areas to the rear and to the side, well, to the side rear of this parcel. So those could, there could be other restrictions as to location or what you could do. So, I mean, this is just a concept, but that was our latest communication. And Kathleen Conlon has accurately represented the request from the neighbors, which is, we would like to know if you're interested in going forward and continuing to discuss this, or if the board simply does not want to. There's not enough support in the board to go forward with exploring this option. Because, you know, I suppose if we know for sure that you won't entertain this, we'll put that aside and see if there's anything else the Vias' can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McEttrick. Anyone on the board, any comments or thoughts? Anyone on the board, any comments or thoughts? Mr. Zulus and then Mr. Wells.
Just a question. Marion, you, you mentioned the setback and, and some of the restrictions, the fact that it would be on a slab. Is the, is the, is the concept that these would be zoning restrictions that would be placed on the property going forward?
Well, if you're talking about the, the ten-foot sideline easement, that would be a deed at easement. That, or rather, the town, it would be a restriction, it would be in any deed that the town were to issue for this property. So the deed would contain a permanent restriction to protect their right to have their drainage in that area and also to retain a right for the public to walk on that portion of the property.
And, and I, I appreciate that. I appreciate the easement. I, I'm thinking about the actual use of the property other than the easement, the property with the easement property. I'm, I'm talking about the use of the property with the garage on it and with the
Yeah, a deed can also impose these restrictions, as you know. They do have some time limitations, but they can be, though I think one, it's possible that one granted by the town might not have, have any time restriction. I haven't researched that, but it definitely can be done. Just as you can grant land and have a restriction saying that nothing can be built on it. You can grant land and say only a single-family home can be built on it and so on and so forth. So if it were the, if the board were interested in having a restriction that only a garage and only of certain dimensions could be built on the parcel, yes, that could be placed in the deed and it would have to be agreed to by the purchaser. But those restrictions are done quite a bit. So, yes, it's possible.
And, and just one other question, and that is, in your memo, you, you mentioned that the, the proposal is subject to further investigation and approvals by a surveyor and engineer, including conservation conditions or requirements if the structure is located within one hundred feet of wetland, the wetlands line in the town property to the rear. Just want, if you could just flesh out what, what the thought is with that, the further investigation and the approvals that you're talking about there?
And as you know, and certainly Mr. Doyle knows, if, if a structure is located within a hundred feet of a wetland, it's under the jurisdiction, it, the permitting of that location and how it's to be done is, is in the jur, within the jurisdiction of the Milton Conservation Commission. So conditions can be imposed, certain, if trees are going to be removed, they have to be replaced. There may be other conditions. I don't know yet whether the, the proposed location for a garage would be within that one-hundred-foot area. So when I, what I mean to tell you is that this sketch plan might have to be changed in terms of the location of the garage if it were impossible for some reason, because of conservation restrictions, to put it at the, towards the very back of a lot. I've explained to you that there are some conservation reasons why the neighbors feel this would be the best place because fewer trees would have to be taken down. And there would be consideration given to what a surface of a driveway would be and so forth. All depending on, you know, where this is located in relation to wetlands. So that's why I, I make that mention. And it is a sketch plan. It is not a survey plan. So in terms of the proper eight-foot setback, for example, from the back of a lot, this sketch plan may or may not represent the precise eight-foot setback that would be required. There are zoning requirements.
Thank you, Mary.
We had Mr. Wells next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have two questions, one from Mr. Zulus and one from you, Madam Chair. So, Michael, I think, was the point, one of the, part of the point you're getting at, like, so let's say you approve the garage and then five years later they want to take the garage down and make it, you know, occupied part of the house in, you know, in addition to the house, a residential, residential part. Is that kind of something you're thinking about there on this?
Yeah, exactly. You know,
Like a change of use?
Right now, it's a, it's a, it's a garage with a ten-foot setback and a, and a slab floor, floor, right? But, you know, that could change in five years. Maybe they want to, they'll own the land at that point. And if there are no restrictions on the land, they could connect it to the house or maybe build a basement or, you know, or maybe bring it up to the, the edge of the lot line within the zoning restrictions of the town. So, so the, the, the thought was, you know, would there be, would it be possible to build those kind of restrictions in? So, so there wouldn't be that flexibility. So, you know, they want to do it for this. And so that would be, that would be it going forward, right? Unless the town, you know, agreed to it. So, yeah, that's exactly right, Richard.
Thank you.
As well, or?
No, I just, no, I'm good, man. I, I, I think, Michael, that's was my, I thought that's kind of what he was thinking about, so I get that.
I think that if the town were to issue an RFP to do this, that they would be well-advised to put the conditions in the RFP that we are talking about now and any others that you think are, feel are appropriate, then the bidders have to, they're, they'll be interested if they can comply with the conditions. They won't be if they can't. They need to know upfront that these would be the conditions.
Familiar with that and the RFP process here. Katie, my point to you is, and I, I think I know what your position was. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but my one apprehension, if we were to do this, is that, and I bring this back to the East Milton Deck project, to the work that went into protecting our right to reopen Adam Street should we chose to do this fifty, you know, one of the things that does concern me here is that Quarry Hills is on a lease. And it's going to end, as Danny may know, probably not in my lifetime, but it's going to end. It's getting closer to the end than it is to the beginning. And depending on what happened, that property is ours, or it's back to us, that Quarry Hills would no longer be there. And I just, even though it's just a footpath access now, it's still our right of way, our access. And that's, my thought is, if we were to do this in any waste shape or form, and I don't know if legally we could do this, I'd almost be inclined to do it as a lease and get, and have a sunset on it versus doing, versus selling it because, just because of what I've just articulated, I would want to preserve the town's rights should we ever need that in the future. Outside of what's already been articulated in a fight apartment and other towns and agencies that have waited, that's just my thought on that. So you don't have to come back, Katie, to me what it was, but I, I think I know what it was, but that's just my thought. I'm immediately brought back to the East Milton, you know, how the work that we did to protect Adam Street should, we want that need to go back to that fifty years, over the years, even five years. Much forbid, I hope. I think I've said enough.
Richard, just to respond to, since you asked me about my position, you know, I, I think, in fact, you may not have been at the most recent meeting where we discussed this, but we've, we've talked about it at a few meetings. And, you know, my, my view was just that it's not in the long-term strategic interest of the town to sell this property because I think it's the most viable access point to the golf course, aside from the old dump access road of Lyman Road or Quarry or the other side streets. I, I think this is the most viable one. And the, you know, the, the golf course itself does have language in the lease that requires that there be public access. I think that's one consideration, but that's more of a consideration while the lease is in effect. I'm thinking more of the long-term of the property. And at some point, the lease is going to come to an end. Maybe it'll be renewed. It's going to be a future generation that decides this. But, you know, there's other options and there are sometimes developments over former landfills. There could be solar farms. It may not necessarily be a multifamily or a retail or, you know, some other development like that, which is a big, a big building. It, it might be that it's solar, a solar project or some other project that we're not even thinking about now. But, you know, thirty years from now, there may be a need for. So that's just, that's just my view. I understand why the resident is making this inquiry of the town. But, and, and the request is certainly is reasonable, but my sense is that the best long-term interest of the town is to retain the land. So that's just, that's just my view. But, Ms. Collins?
Um, I, I think I have to, have to agree with both Ms. Conlon and Mr. Wells. I'm, I'm concerned, I know that there are other access points. They have a lot of ledge. Part of me says, well, I can't, I, I can't imagine at this point what kind of access we would put through this residential neighborhood in that particular place. And at the moment, there are a lot of things that you can't really build on landfills, but things will probably change in the future. As Richard said, I may not be here. But I, I just feel as if it's, it's important to preserve this access at this point. And, and, and I also understand why, why the Vias's would, would make this offer. I, I also think it's, it's reasonable and garages are, are great things to have in New England. So I, I can totally sympathize with that as well. I'm, I'm still at this point not, not really in favor of making the surplus at the moment.
If I, if I could make one comment, that's very helpful. I don't know if a lease is even viable as an option. If it were, you would, you would impose conditions on the lease similar to the ones that you would impose on a sale. And because there is a set end date for the Quarry Hills lease, I'm thinking that it's thirty-odd years now. It was fifty years. Time does pass. But in any case, there is a, there is a set end time. And so, I mean, in theory, it's possible to do this with a lease, but it would mean that the homeowner, whoever owns the property, would have to take the garage down. At least if the town decided they didn't want to extend the lease or something like that because they wanted to use the property. It would keep the title with the town. And, you know, you'd be restricted for that period of time. And I, I think you would need a town meeting vote to approve it because of thirty, anything beyond a certain timeline requires town meeting approval, just like the Quarry Hills leased it. So, I mean, this all gets pretty complicated, but it's an interesting idea. I think the Vias, Vias's are listening in. We've talked about this. They had told me that they didn't think a lease really would work for them. You might want to hear from them on that again in case they're thinking about it. But that's up to you, how you want the discussion to go.
Does anyone have any thoughts, further thoughts, whether on the lease or, or on the request in general? Mr. Dennehy?
Madam Chair, I pulled up the lease document. I believe it was signed March 3rd, nineteen ninety-eight, which would leave approximately twenty-seven years left in the lease.
Thank you. I, I, yeah, I, I think it had a commencement date a little bit later than that, but that's the ballpark, definitely.
I think we'll all be around in twenty-seven years.
I hope so, but I don't know.
Eternal optimist.
It sounds like we have some different thoughts here on the board. A, a, any other comments or any, I, I think what we're hearing Attorney McEttrick say is that her clients would like some direction for the board as to where we're heading with this. And I'm not sure we're there yet.
Madam Chair, I, I would suggest though that we, just for, for both Mrs. McEttrick and her clients, I think it probably would be prudent of us to make a decision on this sooner versus later, even maybe. I'm pretty close now. I, I've thought about this since our sidewalk and going back to what Mrs. Collins said as well, I mean, I just think so many possible things could happen. I mean, the lead twenty-seven years, Quarry Hills might just want to have the eighteen walls and not the twenty-seven, say the town, okay, here you go. This could become a beautiful passive. As Mr. Dennehy knows, people walk it. There are just as, I mean, people play golf, there are just as many people who walk it daily and make use of walking that, you know, it just, it could be the next Donald Arboretum. I, I don't know, but just, I think, going back to what Melinda said, in, in UK, I think we need to prudely protect it for the town enough. I just, I'm close, so maybe we set this for our next, it's up to you, your other chair, but I'd rather do it sooner versus later than drag it out.
Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I just add two things on this. One is that Milton is very land-constrained as it is. And once that asset is gone, it's never going to be able to come back. The second is, what's going to happen in twenty-seven years? We have no idea of what the topography in the back of that property to which we want to have open access to is going to be with all the climate changes that are occurring and are going to occur with increased severity. So I would agree with colleagues who have spoken on this today in terms of the direction in which we're probably going to go as a board.
Anyone else, anything further? It sounds like Ms. Collins and I, I don't, I don't want to, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like Ms. Collins and I are, are, would be, would vote now if that were, if this were put to a vote. I, Mr. Wells?
I, I will as well, Madam Chair, if you want to vote tonight.
And I also.
I'll make a, I'll make the motion, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion. Let me just sort of my agenda here quickly. I'll make a motion that we don't deem this property a surplus. Parcels abutting 145 and 167.
I'll second the motion. Do we have any further discussion? I, I, if not, I just want to add, I, I know the residents are here and it certainly is a reasonable request as an abouter to explore this with the town and with the planning director in the first place, as you've done. And I, I think we've, we've done some due diligence on this and we, it's taken us a little bit of time to, to get to this point where we've formulated a position. But, but thank you to the residents for their cooperation and for, and for the sidewalk and for hosting us on that. And all the information that they and Attorney McEttrick have provided to us.
I could curl that, Madam Chair.
Does anyone have anything further? If not, we will go to a vote. All in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, the motion is to not
Not to
convey the property. So the response to the motion would be, yes, is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Azulis?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you very much, Attorney McEttrick, and to your clients.
Thank you, and thank you for very carefully looking at this. I appreciate all of your input. We'll see what else they can do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Okay, we're on to board appointments next. Item eleven is the local historic district study committee. And we have, everyone should have a package of applications. We have a number of people who have applied for this board. We also have some nominees from the Historical Commission, the Board of Realtors and the Boston Society for Architecture, which, one, at least one from each of those organizations. But we could choose two from the Boston Society for Architecture would be members. This is a five-member committee. And I, I didn't count, but it looks like we have over a dozen other candidates who have applied, all with interesting and good backgrounds. What's the desire of the board in terms of how to handle this committee? Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, if I may, at the outset, back on April 28th, when the Equity and Justice Committee came in to give their report, we, I think we committed to making some outreach with respect to the, the appointment of committees, including this specific committee and a couple of the other committees that we have on the agenda tonight. And so I think it's important for us to convey what has been done to date and decide whether that is enough before we go forward with appointing all the committees. It may have been, it may be with respect to some, it may not be with respect to others. But I think it's important for the public to know what has been done in response to our commitment back on April 28th.
Okay, I, I don't want to put her on the spot, but I know that our former chair, Ms. Collins and Ms. McCullough have been working on this matter since that time, Mr. Zulus. So, Ms. Collins, would you like to give any kind of an update on this?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Ms. McCullough and I reworked the volunteer application. We sent it to the board for them to, to, for all of you to send feedback. I, I think it was pretty favorably received. And then we put together a package, just a one-pager, for lack of a better term, publicizing each committee, providing links to each committee's charge and information about them and making sure that Jennifer McCullough's information was, was clear and that people could call her for any reason to find out more. And, and we, we sent that off. They did receive it. They thanked us. And I, I, I did send Pat Latimore, who's chair, a follow-up email this evening because I'm wondering if we all have the same understanding of the process. I, I thought that they were going to help us by sending the packet out to all their, their various networks. And I'm, I'm not, it was not my understanding that they were going to send us I'm, I'm not, it was not my understanding that they were going to send us nominees, but I could be wrong. So I, I did, I haven't gotten a response yet. My apologies for that. So, so that's what's been done. We, we tried to get that done fairly quickly and Ms. McCullough may have an exact date. I don't have that. My apologies. Oh, the other thing that we did, actually, we went through the entire website for boards and committees. And Ms. McCullough, we, we made notes together about how to improve it so that it was really accurate and inclusive of, of all the committees and, and that you could, when you pressed a link, it actually went to where it was, it was supposed to go and that there, there was the proper information. So we're still working through a couple, but not the ones that are in question this evening. Thank you.
My understanding, we did get, yeah, Mr. Wells, just to
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just, my understanding is we did get a candidate for a different board, the Milton Village Central Revitalization Committee through the Equity and Justice Committee. So we do have at least one person, not, not for this particular committee. It's Mr. Wells.
So I, I'm just thinking far up on both Ms. Collins and Mr. Azulis is that perhaps we could, at least because we have so much on our plate, at least vote the nominees of the Historical Commission, the Board of Realtors and to the board's preference, either one or both, two members from the Boston Society for Architecture. That just, and then that still would leave us. If we choose two from the society, that would leave us one, if we don't choose one from the Society of Architecture, that would leave two more candidates to select. We could come back to that, give it another week and see what happens, a week or two and see what happens for applicants, but at least I mean, those are nominations for why these other committees, I think we could at least get it started.
That's a good suggestion. Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, I draw our attention to the notation to the effect that under the state law, the historic district study committee may consist of up to seven members. And would be my suggestion that we seriously consider going to that number and having greater participation and access. We have a very rich pool of candidates. From my perspective and part of my background is in the area of history, I would, the other business, I would say having two architects would be an asset. And hopefully you'll consider those remarks and we'll possibly move to seven. And if you'd like a motion to that effect, I'd be happy to move that the committee be increased to a membership of seven.
I, I think we would have to do that at a future meeting only because we've already approved the charge, which mentioned five, and we just have this on for appointment. So we could increase the membership at a next meeting.
That would be fine.
Okay. And do we want to go with Richard's suggestion that we at least appoint tonight the people who have been recommended by the various boards?
I'm sure I think Melinda has, Ms. Collins has a question.
Ms. Collins, yes.
Oh, thank you. I, I just wanted to, to say I agree with Mr. Doyle's suggestion. And just so I understand, we'd be talking about Mr. Mullen, Mr. Lawfer, and I, I think also Ms. Meyer and Mr. McLean. I liked the idea of having both architects on. I think they bring really complimentary strengths. Okay, and then, and then we would save the rest of the, the committee for the next meeting? Is that, is that what we were talking about? Okay.
We would appoint those four, then at the next meeting, we could increase the membership to seven and revise the charge and appoint three others.
Madam Chair, if you will indulge me, I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Mullen as the Historical Commission nominee, Larry Lala as the Local Board of Realtors nominee, and Siduma, Sidumaya and Ryan McLean as the Soci- Society for Architecture nominees for second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
I think it needs to go to the, I want to just friendly, because I left out, because we want to change, I left out the ad lagers, but I do say the historic District Study Committee with the terms expiring November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. And Arthur has seconded that motion.
Thank you.
Any, if no further discussion, then all in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Azulis.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we're halfway there. Add this back on for, is, is June ninth too soon, or do we, in, in terms of the follow-up at the E and J committee, or do we want to put it off for that night?
I think it's fine. I would be happy to, sorry, I jumped in there. I'd be happy to follow up since I already emailed Ms. Latimore.
I think that would be great if you could follow up with her.
Just a point of note to Madam Chair, the, the names below, there's a pretty diverse pool of names there currently before us.
Yes.
It, it is the same pool as on the twenty-eighth, though. It's, it's the same, it hasn't changed since the twenty-eighth, so, so maybe it might benefit.
All right, I'm fine with that.
And I think, I think, Richard, you made a great suggestion. I think it was a great suggestion to make. You know, and, and, and Melinda, to your point about what, what we thought we'd do on the twenty-eighth, my memory is that they were gonna, that the, the members, the Equity and Justice Committee were going to help us publicize and then, you know, maybe get it to the churches. I remember, I remember that. And so, you know, my, my, my thought is, you know, let's, let's see where we are on the, on the ninth and see if we've publicized it a lot. I do have one question. Are, are we using the new application? Now, I didn't notice that in some of the applications we had, maybe it's because of the, they were the old ones, but are we using the new one now?
Um, yes, but you're exactly correct because these are the names that we've had. We've had them for a little while and and, yeah, so, so it's the old one. One, one, one question that we did add was how, how, to ask how people heard about the position and then also how, what better ways are there to reach you? So hopefully we'll be doing a little institutional learning and we'll see.
Okay, so why don't we see where we're at when Ms. Collins talks with Ms. Latimore and whether we're ready to put this on for the ninth? But the, the hope that we can put it up for the ninth. The next is an appointment to the MWRA Advisory Board.
I'll make a motion to appoint PPW Director Chase Burke with the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority Advisory Board to allow the town administrator to sign off, sign off on the appointment.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor. Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Azulis.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
No better man, yes.
And Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Reappointments to the Conservation Commission, one of Arthur's colleagues. Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, if I may, the motion suggests one-year term. I checked with Chair Cannon, terms of for three years. He has spoken with Ingrid and she would accept a three-year appointment. And he would love to have her on for a three-year appointment. So with that, I would move to reappoint Ingrid Beatty to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years expiring of May of two thousand, what, twenty-four?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Azulis.
Yes.
Ms. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee appointments. Some of them are reappointments. We have one new appointment. That, the new appointment would be Linda Champion, who is applying through the Equity and Justice Committee process.
So Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint, and I hope I say this right, John Zichowitz, Chad Lund Dean, Michael Walcott, Ruth Hyde, to appoint Linda Champion to the Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee for a term of one year expiring May of twenty-twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And
Silence scared me.
If not all in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Azulis.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, the next appointments are to the Open Space Planning Committee, which the planning director has been working on for a while. Are we comfortable appointing this board this evening?
Madam Chair, my motion to appoint Theodore Carroll. Oops, you want me to, you don't want to do it, Michael?
No, I, I, I just wanted to, to, to find out. I, I, I know the planning director wants to get this appointed. I just wanted to, I just wanted to raise the issue again about whether we've, we've, we've had sufficient outreach for this, for this committee. Because supposed to the prior two, where we did have some result from the outreach and, and the other one was a single reappointment. This one seems to be, this is a new committee. Uh, and it's a number of appointments, so I'm just wondering if we've, if we've had that kind of outreach or some results from it.
How about a, how about a friendly amendment? I'd be willing to go back to this and add to it if, if that, if that occurs. Would you accept that? Would you?
Yeah, yeah, I think Melinda actually has something.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Collins.
So that, that, that's okay. So I, I'm, I don't know how we want to handle it, but I did have a follow-up conversation with Mr. Zawinski. He had already sent his nomination form to the Equity and Justice Committee and asked them to, for help in, in making up this, this panel of nominees. I, I'm, I'm not sure that, that that will change people's minds about, you know, whether they'd like to wait a, a, a little longer until I talk with Ms. Latimore. But, but he did, he did let me know that he had already done that. Actually, he reminded me because I think he had told me that before because we've had a lot of conversations about re- reaching out to, to people who we haven't historically been very good at doing.
So, so, so given that, I mean, I like Richard's suggestion, and I know, I know the planning director wants to, wants to get going with this, I understand. So, so I like Richard's suggestion of making the appointment, given the fact that we've done some outreach and then confirming, perhaps Melinda confirming the outreach. And, and if we have additional candidates, we can, we can, we can appoint them to help as well.
Okay, that, that might again require an amendment to the charge. But, but we can take that up at a, at a future meeting, then if we want to go ahead and appoint this committee. And, and we're going to have a number of other committees coming up for appointments in usually every month, we have at least a couple. So, so hopefully, hopefully those will all be forwarded over to the Equity and Justice Committee and they'll be able to help us identify some candidates. Okay, so do we have a motion then for this committee?
I think I do. Can I, should I continue? You all right with that, Michael? I'll get, okay. So the motion is to appoint Theodore Carroll, Catherine O'Donnell, Wendy Gopple, Fred McFadden, Mark Boyle, Christie Donnie and Becky Simmons to the Open Space Planning Committee, the terms expiring April thirty of twenty-twenty-four.
A second.
Any discussion?
Just, just one point, Madam Chair. I believe this is a resurrection of an old committee that existed years ago. Am I correct?
It was on it.
I don't recall.
You're on it correctly. I, I just recall something about it that existed years ago, so. Thank you. That's all that was my.
Okay, then Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Azulis.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
And Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we've taken up item sixteen already. Number seventeen is a discussion of the appointments that members of our board are serving on. We have a list of them. Jennifer is highlighted for is in red, when these are expiring. Some of them are September, one is December. And several of them are in July. So the committees, I, I, I think, I think we all, we all know which ones we're serving. I think we all have a sense of which all of us are serving on. We have the Affordable Housing Trust, for the public's benefit. I'm serving in the Affordable Housing Trust. The Housing Committee is, is Melinda and Arthur. And Arthur, there is the MPIC's representative. Capital Planning Committee is Richard. The Finance Committee, this past year has been Mike Zulis and me. Master Plan Implementation Committee is Arthur. I'm quite not sure who the Ulan Rink
It was Tony. It was Tony.
It was Tony, but I thought we reappointed someone after Tony stepped down.
I think you were on it, Richard, last year.
I what? Really?
It's an inactive committee, I think.
Okay, all right.
Um, the Milton Landing Committee has been Richard and me. I've had some trouble getting to those meetings because at the time, they're usually in the morning. Pilot Committee has been me. Policy Committee was Melinda and Mike Zulis. Youth Task Force, I think, was Mike and was Richard at one time. Municipal Broad Van Committee is Mike and the Fire Station Building Committee, Richard, you're our liaison to that committee.
And then more, Madam Chair, that is not on here, that, only because we met yesterday, and it's my oldest committee, is MPIC.
Oh.
I just got an MPIC as well.
MPIC. For the viewing public, that's Milton Access TV's board. Okay, thank you, Richard. So the, usually this time after we've gone through the election and gone through town meeting and reorganized the board, we then talk about the committees that members of the board are serving on, whether people would like to stay on the same committees or make some changes. So we'll open it up to discussion. Thoughts? Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, a question. With respect to the dates and the similarities among them and the timing relative to the elections, would it make any sense to consider vacating all of the positions and then appointing them effective to state so that they carry on into the year rather than have possible dislocations, midstream and things out of tandem. Just a thought from observation and fire experience.
What does everyone think? What's the sense of the board? It may create some administrative work for the office, but that's the only thing that I can think of as the only potential downside. Thoughts? Mr. Azulis.
I mean, I, I think that kind of uniformity would be, would be useful.
I agree.
It's predictable, it's consistent, it's uniform. I think those are all, those are all good things.
Richard, did you say you agreed?
I agree, yeah, I agree.
I, I have no objection to that. Ms. Collins?
I, I, I don't, I don't object to it either. And we don't get appointment letters and things because these are or do, do we for all of them? Yeah, I guess we do. So I see that's the administrative burden. And I'm just wondering what we have to do administratively to ma- to make that happen. Do we have to have a vote to change all these or just wondering about process.
Yeah, I think Arthur suggested a vote to vacate the appointments effective today and then to make reappointments.
Okay.
Or, or whatever day we do it. If we do it today, I think, I think the idea is vacate them. We don't want to, we don't want a gap, right? So the idea is probably to vacate them if we do it today or if we do it in two weeks. Vacate them and start at the same time.
Okay. That sound right, Arthur?
Yes.
Had in mind, okay. So do we want to make any changes? Does anyone? Would anyone like to step off a committee that they're serving on, add a committee? People, what are thoughts on that?
I'm actually fine.
Flexible. I, I made some change, some changes last year, so I'm, I'm pretty flexible with whatever committees. I mean, the one I probably would like to stay on is Pilot, since we've been inactive and we're trying to get a meeting going on that.
I, I'm interested in housing and, and I, and I, you know, if people want to stay on, that's fine, but I'm interested in that just, just because I, I, I'd like to get more involved in it and learn a little bit more about it, but that's the only, only additional one that, that I'd be interested in.
Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, this thought just struck my mind. I'd be willing to swap. Mike, you are on the Finance Committee at the present time, if I recall.
Yep.
Want to switch seats? Because I would like to serve on the Finance Committee if that would be possible and acceptable.
It's, it's, it's fine with me. The only thing is, if you're the MPIC representative, does that create a, a problem?
I think it does. So maybe there's a way we put, we can get Arthur on the Finance Committee aside from that particular swap and we do something else. I'd be willing to step off the Affordable Housing Trust, Mike, if you'd like to go on to that committee. They've under Melinda's leadership, they've been meeting jointly, the Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't know if that will always be the way, but they have been, in recent times, they've been joint meetings. Ms. Collins.
Um, so a couple of things. So the Affordable Housing Trust's charge is a lot meatier than the Housing Committee's charge. I, I've been wondering if the Housing Committee, I think it's very valuable to have somebody from the Planning Board and someone from MPIC and Katie, you were great. Arthur's been great in his, his own way. And, and, you know, And, and, you know, coordinating us and things like that. So Arthur, I don't know, I don't know how you've been enjoying MPIC. As I said, you've been an asset, so I, in, in that regard, I, I don't, I don't know, and Mike, I don't know if you didn't want to be MPIC. I, I'm, I'm willing to consider not being on Housing. But, but I feel like there's still a lot of work to do. So I, I, I just was trying to provide some color as, as you guys are thinking and talking.
I, I suppose one option might be since the, the Housing Committee is a charge that we put together and we designated a member of the Master Plan Committee, we could change that charge so that it's not tied to the Master Plan Committee. And that might.
Add somebody to, you know, we, we could, we could add, we could add, add a member, I suppose, but then that's three of us. So, I mean, I, I, I would.
The Affordable Housing Trust is, you know, Richard has served on it. Tom Hurley was on it before that, and then Melinda was on it after Richard. I've stepped onto it, but I would be more than willing to step off that one if, Mike, if you wanted to do one.
Oh.
I, I was actually a, a little more interested in Housing, given the, the nature of the charge. But, but, you know, may, maybe it's something we can think about now that we've kind of floated these ideas.
Yeah, we don't have to decide it tonight.
Right, and, and, you know, maybe I could go back on the Affordable Housing Trust. If, if one of you, one of you is gonna probably have to chair the Housing Committee though. Although I don't know, maybe, maybe somebody else on the committee would do it. I'm not, I'm not sure. That's a good group of people.
I think the Affordable Housing Trust would be thrilled to see you come back.
That, that might be, you know, that might be one option. If you wanted to do that, Melinda, if you wanted to go on to the Affordable Housing Trust, I could step off it and then that would free up. Sweet. Although you, you've done, you, you were the one who created the Housing Committee and really put that idea forward. So in, in some sense, I think we should defer a little bit to Melinda, whether she wants to stay on the Housing Committee and see how we might address the membership to, to, you know, to bring Mike into it without Melinda stepping out of it completely.
Well, I, I'll, I'll think about it. I mean, we, we do, we do, we do work together a lot. And so I, 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 I'll give it some consideration. I, I, there's also something to be said for sort of new, new, new blood, right, and new ideas, so.
So the Finance Committee, we're gonna have to think about how to address. In recent months, we've been posting the notices of the Finance Committee meetings for both the Committee and the full board. And Arthur has attended some, Melinda has attended many of them, Melinda was on the committee, so. And I know, Richard, you've been at some of them as well, so we could continue to do that. And, or we get a point three members of the board to the Finance Committee, which would automatically make every meeting a member of the full board. We'd have to post for both, which is what the School Committee does. They, they typically, at least recently, I don't know if they've always done it this way, Mike Zulus, but they, at least recently, seem to be posting the, the Finance Subcommittee of the School Committee with their full committee.
We didn't do that in the past. That, that, that was a, we had, it was a subcommittee of two way back when.
I, I'm also willing to step down from the Finance Committee, so that, that's an option as well. As I said at the beginning, Pilot is the one that I'd like to stay on because we, with COVID, that committee has not really met. And we've taken, taken a step back with that committee in terms of knowing that all of the institutions, we talked about the SEDR retreat and I think at one of our meetings last year, that all of the institutions are impacted by COVID as well as every resident. So the thought there was to kind of wait and see a little bit how, how things would go with COVID in terms of impacting endowments and the institutions generally, but.
And, and Katie, it, 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 given that you're the chair, it may be, it may be, we, maybe, maybe we should think about lightening your load just a little bit in terms of meetings, you know, whether.
I thought the same thing.
For you to think about, but I know when, when I was chair, I tried to, tried to get off as many as possible just because of the demands as the chair. It's personal preference.
No, I, I, I'm, I agree. I'm, I'm happy to step off the Finance Committee. If Arthur would like to go on it and Arthur and Mike together would like to do it, that, that would be fine with me. The financial policies is something that I really would, Melinda and I had worked on those a lot, one of the Finance Committee was the both of us. And I, I think it's important that we really get that back on track. We've, we deferred it because we got into one budget season and then we had another budget season and we've, that has taken the back burner at the Finance Meetings. But I think it's something that we could potentially tackle this summer and try to get in place. And maybe the Policy Committee has a role there, but at least a couple of years ago, or I guess three years ago, right after the board expanded to five, and we created the Policy Committee and the Finance Committee. The Policy Committee really kicked that over to the Finance Committee and said, financial policy, some, financial policies is something the Finance Committee should work on, but we could reconsider that.
Yeah, unfortunately, the Policy Committee's been a little more abundant the last year, but we'll, we'll get it going again.
Well, you know, for, for people who are watching, the Zoom challenges are with the Zoom license and all the town boards and committees that have had to meet. And we've, we've had, we had to go and get a second Zoom license in order to accommodate all the 40B meetings. So for a long time, some of the committees really couldn't meet because back a year ago in the spring, it really wasn't the capacity to do it. Ms. Collins?
Thank you. Well, I, I, I'm happy to continue to work on the financial policies, even though I, I wouldn't be part of the Finance Committee. I am interested in staying on the Policy Committee, though. I, I, I've been collecting policies to propose while, while I was chair. I, I think a number of us have attended some just wonderful programs on things civil discourse and, and, and all kinds of things. But I, but I, I'd be happy to also help with financial policies, at least to clean them up to the point where they'd be useful to somebody else to, to start working on.
And I think, Richard, I heard you say that, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're, you're not looking to make any particular change.
I'll, I'll stay right where I'm at. That's okay.
Okay. So anyone else, anything further on board committees? Well, yeah, this is our meeting agenda for the ninth. We can think about these topics a little further and see what changes make sense. And that does give Jennifer McCullar a little time to get all the appointments and reappoint them. Ms. Collins?
Oh, I, I did just want to offer, because I'm only on two currently. If somebody would like to change something that, that, that they're, they're doing, I'd be happy to consider that. So.
Madam Chair, just one final.
You're on mute, Richard. There you go.
All right, just one final point, Madam Chair. I'd like just to follow up on Arthur's thing. Arthur's initial point is maybe we set July first as the appointment date and the expiration date for all the committees. To, to what Michael said as well, it just gives consistency, the chances of something slipping through the cracks. And as we all know, from the clerk's point of view, who we have been mentioning tonight, she, she wants you down there sworn so that your votes count, I think it's right of course. That way we all know that July wins the date, it's just like our fiscal years.
And it ties in with fiscal programming too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sounds reasonable. Okay, so I think we have a plan ahead of us going forward. Then if nothing else on the committees, why don't we move on to eighteen, which is a report of the Finance Committee on the FY twenty-two budget and the CARES Act and other funding. It's, it's almost nine o'clock, so maybe we can make this brief. And I guess I could start and maybe Mr. Zulus could, could jump in or Ms. Dennehy. We, we are gonna be meeting tomorrow with the schools, we'll have more information at a later date. But our, our committee met on the twenty-first. And I thought Mr. Zulus put it well, that, that the bottom line here is we have essentially five buckets of, of money, I think you said, Mike, so to speak, that we have to think about in the next few months, some of it with the School Committee as we go forward. We have some, the first one is we have some additional state aid that the Senate is considering for about sixty-two thousand dollars. Obviously, the, the, the final state budget hasn't passed yet, but that's the latest information. There's also the CARES Act, which we still have several hundred thousand dollars available through the end of December. And all of the departments are checking their line items to see if there's anything that is reimbursable that has not been submitted for reimbursement. But we've, we've reached out a couple of times to the School Committee to let them know that there are additional funds available through the CARES Act. And we'd like to see if there's something that could be targeted to the social or emotional needs of the students or maybe the summer school program or anything that would be reimbursable. The School Committee under the federal ESER program will be receiving approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. The town's share of the Federal American Rescue Plan Act is two point seven million. And accountable for Milton, the county has received about five point five million. Of course, it's received a much greater amount than that, but breaking it down by town, it's about five point five for Milton. So this, our, our committee talked about coming up with a needs list, developing a transition budget as we move out of the pandemic and back into a state of normalcy. We talked a little bit about inspectional services and because of the workload volume there with so many homeowners doing projects at their homes, whether there's some need for part-time help. And we're looking forward to meeting with the School Committee to talk further about some of these resources that will be available. And Mr. Zulus or Mr. Dennehy, anything to add? Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's well-reviewed, Madam Chair. I mean, I, I think, you know, yourself, Madam Chair, you, you've been very active in trying to engage with the schools because there are significant funding sources to assist children. And, and, and I think it's the intention, certainly the Finance Committee, and I, I'm gonna assume this board, to get those resources to help children because there's a significant, we, we want to respond and we want to help certainly the schools with the budgeting respond to those things. So I, so I, I think there's, there's, there's been a lot of activity on, on the part of the Finance Committee to respond to those needs and to try to help the children. There has been some suggestion, I think, that, there was some suggestion, I think, at School Committee and other places about, well, Hingham put all kinds of, put more resources into the schools and Milton should have been more like Hingham. And the only thing I would say to that is it's a good thing Milton is not like Hingham because Hingham only used seven point six percent of its stabilization fund. Milton used seventeen point four percent of its stabilization fund. So if Milton had been like Hingham, we would have been laying off teachers and laying off other employees. So I, so I think, you know, there is a, I think, town meeting and I think this board, and I think all of the, the town has been committed to the, to the children and the schools and will continue to be committed to the children and the schools to try to get that additional funding to provide the, to provide the kind of programs to, to respond to the needs of the children, particularly coming out of the pandemic.
Any comments? Mr. Dennehy?
I did reach out to Chuck Caputo. Lieutenant Caputo is our LEPC, Local Emergency Planning Director. If you remember, when, when COVID first hit, there was a mad scramble for PPE and other items. Tents, equipment, storing PPE, stuff like that. So we are in the process of investigating. I know the CARES Act and, and Mass D O R kind of frowned upon it during COVID. But certainly something we should think about if, if it's allowable. Maybe buying a container that we can supply, you know, make sure that we have proper PPE, hand sanitizer, all the stuff that we ended up having to, really like a mad scramble by our chairman officer, Mike Kelly, try to find this material. So he's just a list of things that may help the town of Milton become more prepared and understanding that we don't want to return this money, but also not spend it foolishly. I think it would be very wise if we could kind of prepare ourselves for, for next steps if, if we, we come into a similar situation.
Mr. Wells?
Just to follow up on Michael's point. I'm gonna say it's probably ten years ago, maybe even fifteen, when we first created the LEPC, that we first, through public health, we retained that trailer that we had, that we've had secreted in a secure location for all these years that got us through those first few weeks that, of PPE that had we not had then. And I think that it's probably a very good prudent move and I'm not surprised by the fact that Lieutenant Caputo was even thinking of that because who knows what could happen again.
Yeah, that sounds like it should be a priority for funding. Finance Director Karen Preval is working with all the departments to identify any additional items on the town side and, and I, and I believe is reaching out to the School Committee also, to, the School Administration, to follow up on the, the needs at the schools. So more to come after our joint meeting tomorrow, which I believe is at, what time is it at, Mike? I'm driving, confusing with today's twelve thirty meetings at twelve?
I believe it's twelve, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anything else on Finance? If not, we'll go on to number nineteen, and I believe Town Council is joining us for this. This is a conservation restriction for one fifty-three Hillside Street. Mr. Freitag, thank you.
Yes, good evening again, Madam Chair. Kevin Freitag, Office of Town Council. This conservation restriction relates to one fifty-three Hillside Street. That parcel is approximately two point one four acres and this conservation restriction applies to a little over half an acre, point six three acres. This restriction has been approved by my office as well as the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And basically what it does is it tremendously restricts what can be done on the point six acres of the property that are subject to the restriction, including prohibiting construction, the removal of wildlife and pretty much any type of commercial or other use of that portion of the property. So this, this is ready to go. It needs to be executed by the Select Board and then on to the Conservation Commission for their signatures.
Okay, do we have any questions, Arthur?
Madam Chair, I just might add that the Conservation Commission has also reviewed the draft and received the final document. And with gratitude to Webster Collins, Scott Johnson, and Marion McKetrick and others who have made this contribution possible. It's a very important conservation restriction. The Congress plans to sign the final document at its site visit this Saturday morning.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Collins?
Even though I, I don't think there's really a problem, I'm not going to participate in this vote since I'm related to Web Collins by marriage, so I'll accuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, given that, I want to make a motion to sign and notarize a conservation restriction at one fifty-three Hillside Street as defined in, and authorized by sections thirty-one to thirty-three of chapter one eighty-four of the Mass General Laws to assure the premises we maintain in perpetuity for conservation purposes in its natural scenic undeveloped condition and to prevent the use of or change to the premises that would impair, interfere with the conservation and preservation values.
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, and thank you to Town Council.
Thank you.
And we'll wait for Ms., there she is, Ms. Collins. Okay, run to number twenty, an acceptance of a grant from the Norfolk District Attorney's Office.
Madam Chair, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the grant, five thousand dollars from Norfolk County District Attorney Michael Morris's office to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And thank him for that, for his continued dedication to the citizens.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. Item twenty-one is a discussion and approval. It was a wish for a use the town gazebo and green for a standout on June eleventh at four thirty PM. And I'll quote, "A standout against the recent violence between Israel and Palestine, as well as a protest against the U.S. involvement." The description on the application for the standout. Thoughts? We have Mr. Doyle and Ms. Collins.
No, Ms. Collins, yeah.
Um, I, I, well, I, I apologize for not noticing it earlier on the application, but it, it has, has a person's name on, on it, but then it says "we." So I'm wondering if this is an organization and we know the name of the organization.
Just gonna pull it up. I believe it's a student group, is that right?
I do too. I thought, I thought he said he was a high school student.
I believe it's a high school, Milton High School sophomore.
Okay.
Is it, it may be, Melinda, that the "we" was referring to the, to supporters who are going to be with him?
It's, it's a she. She's on.
A she, I'm, I'm sorry with her.
Yeah. Task force, sorry, Mike. Task force, sorry, Mike.
Remember the task force, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a, oh, sorry.
Was I, Mr. Doyle had a point? Yeah, it's kind of. Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, the first phrase is just very clear and unambiguous. The second phrase, uh, seems to suggest some ambiguity in play for either misinformation. Or misunderstanding, um, would one, for example, uh, protest against the US's involvement in a piece of court? It, it's not what the intent of the second phrase is and how it might be interpreted or misinterpreted.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the only information that we have is what's on the application unless Mr. Dennehy, anyone has talked with the student. Do you know if that's the case? Found out any more information? Mr. Dennehy's screen might be frozen.
Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, we, we do have Town Council available this evening. And my understanding from talking with Town Council earlier is that, um, you know, allowing the use of the gazebo would not. Mr. Dennehy?
Katie.
You just froze Katie. If she still was, Michael.
She's moving, I can see her moving.
We're not hearing anything.
Katie, can you repeat what you said because you're, you, you, you faded out?
Can you hear me?
You can.
Barely. Try again.
It doesn't seem that Katie can hear us, so she's frozen.
Yeah, I'm seeing all of you frozen. Why don't we go to Mr. Frytag and ask him?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Kevin Frytag, Town Council. I just can sort of reiterate what you and I discussed earlier this afternoon, which was that, uh, In previous discussion and consideration of this entire sort of, um, Use of the gazebo in the town green area. It, the, the town had considered that to be an area that was sort of a traditional public and, and free speech forum. Therefore, it's, it's really not the, the place of the town necessarily to be. Taking a position one way or the other on anything that, that, uh, may be said. While that particular piece of property is being, is being used in, in the manner that I think is being described in this. In this application. I mean, certainly. The, the town is, is, I think, in a position where it could ask for some additional information if it thought that that was necessary in order to dis- To discuss and then, and consider the, the application. But where it is a, a traditional public speech forum. The town typically in those situations, towns don't ex, you know, have any sort of control. Or over the content of the speech that's being permitted. And at the same time, the, the town doesn't typically endorse and, and may even frankly state outright that it, it does not endorse or take any position regarding the, The content of the speech that may take place at the, at the location.
I agree, this is a First Amendment issue, I think that I agree with Town Council, I don't think we need to dip our toe in this at all, I'm just. Am I summarizing that correctly, Kevin? Would you agree with me on that?
That's correct, I mean, obviously there are some restrictions that, you know, you would probably recognize from your time with the Milton Police Department. There were things that were said that were insightful perhaps, um, or that, you know, Somehow crossed the line into something that was just, uh, utterly inappropriate, maybe profane or, or something of that nature. Then there might be some involvement, but if, you know, in a traditional public speech, free speech forum. It's, it's meant to give a great amount of latitude to individuals to express and, and, and exercise their First Amendment rights.
Yeah, I apologize for that, I exited the meeting because I, I just saw everybody freeze up, but Mike Dennehy tells me I'm the one who froze up, so I, I. Thank you, Kevin, for jumping in and I, I missed the beginning of it, but it sounds like you've responded to Arthur's question, Mr. Zulus?
And, and I was just going to say, perhaps the, the proper motion is just to approve, to, to vote to approve, uh, the gazebo, uh, for a standout. Uh, without characterizing the speech, uh, that is going, the speech that has, that, that may or may not be done. I mean, uh, I, I, I think, um, while this, while, while a board could restrict speech, I suppose, in the use of the gazebo. Uh, it's not my view that, uh, that we should. And that, uh, that it, as, as Kevin pointed out, it is a public square, if you will. And people have a right to use a public square and it doesn't seem to me that it'd be, uh, within our purview to restrict or to, Comment on what the public speech in the public square would be.
That's a motion, I'll a second.
I don't think it was, I don't think it's, I think the motion would be, well, Richard, go ahead, I didn't, I don't want to jump in.
I, 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 I'm going to agree with you on what you think the most, my only, and you can tell me, I believe I'm correcting this, Kevin. The only subject I want to put on this is just conversation, at least a run there planned by the police chief. One thing, if they show up, if we don't do anything and they show up with 100 people blocking both driveways. I think it's a pre, a pre creating discussion with the chief should be, uh, attached to whatever role we take.
Your application indicates 50, I guess, anticipated, but that's only a guesstimate at this stage. Mr. Zulus?
So I'll make a motion to approve the application requesting the use of the gazebo at town green on June 11th, 2021. For a standout, subject to a review by the, um, by the police, by the police chief.
Second.
Any further discussion? And all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Yes. Number 22, one day liquor license for the Eustace Estate. Starting to hear some thunder out there. Are you outside, Richard?
I'm on my porch, I'm under the awning, but a good crack of thunder just went right across the roof.
I'm in Boston, but there's a lot of thunder out there.
I hope it's not enough in the morning.
Lightning just flashed in your window, Mike Zulus.
I can hear it here now.
Well, I'm grounded, I hope Richard's grounded.
I'm going to go inside in a second.
You may swim inside.
Well, I, I will move to approve a one day liquor license for June 20th, 2021 for the Dogwood Days Beer Garden Event at the Eustace Estate.
Okay.
The discussion, seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, taxi licenses, uh, I understand we have a revised motion, which I don't have in front of me, but there's one, it's Shore Transit Inc. That needs to be pending a reinspection.
Right. Um, let's see, uh, I, um, moved to approve the renewal of the following taxicab licenses for 2021. Parkway Cab Inc. of 66 Alfius Road, Roselandale for one taxicab license. And Shore Transit Inc. doing business as Milton Cab for 10 Des Moines Road. Quincy for one taxicab license pending final inspection in, from police.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Wells? A little bit of water here, you're muted, Mr. Wells?
Sorry, Madam Chair, yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we have, the next item is Pride Month Proclamation.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign a proclamation for Pride Month for June 21st. For town of Milton.
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Myself, yes. Now, item 25 is deferred, item 26, we have minutes from December 2nd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2020.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or changes? Uh, if not all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Collins? Myself, yes. Uh, future meeting dates, we have meetings June 9th and June 23rd. And we had also talked a while back about scheduling our retreat for June 19th at 10 AM, if that, which is a Saturday, if that still works. Those dates? Mr. Zulus?
Madam Chair, uh, can, can I just check the, uh, the June 19th date? We may have, um, I think sports will be over by then, but I need to check the playoff schedule.
Okay, all right.
Welcome to my world, mine's coming to the end.
If we have to reschedule that, we can, you know, we have plenty of time in the summer. We're on to the town administrator's report, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Two things, well, three things tonight, we talked about the Memorial Day observance, I just want to reiterate, reiterate to everyone. Um, that it's going to take place Monday, May 31st, um, at the cemetery. Uh, there will be no parade, um, but there will be an observance, um, at the, at the soldiers' portion of the cemetery. Secondly, um, people watching tonight may have read an article in the Boston Globe about, uh, PFAs, which are polyfluor- fluororocal substances in some Massachusetts drinking water supplies. DPW Director Berkeley was in direct contact with mass water resource. Um, as many of you know, uh, Milton is a MWR, a community. Mass water resources confirm, um, that their reservoirs testing, um, was well below the new mass DEP regulatory standard. So the long and short of it is, um, that, that this article would not apply to our community and our water supply. The only other thing I have tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to read a, a notice from our fire chief, Chris Madden. Today firefighter Tom Cicerone is working his final shift for the Milton Fire Department. Firefighter Cicerone was appointed on November 19th, 1979. The official retirement date is May 31st, 2021. Firefighters, firefighter Cicerone is a certified fire instructor, certified hazardous materials technician. Representing Milton, Milton Fire on the Massachusetts District 13 Hazmat Team. A certified rescue technician representing Milton, Milton Fire on the Massachusetts FEMA Task Force One. And the Norfolk County Technical Rescue Team. His experience, knowledge, technical skill, physical ability and leadership will be missed. I, along with Chief Madden and all the members of Milton Fire Department, want to thank Tom for his more than 41 years service to the town of Milton. I will say, um, he's not going too far, he's still sits on our retirement board. Uh, will continue to do that for some time, but I just want to really appreciate and acknowledge firefighter Cicerone's dedication and, and passion. As a Milton firefighter, uh, and his service to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy, it's a long, long career, Arthur's got the right idea, we're clapping virtually.
Well done, Tom. Many joint responses over these many decades. When you look at him, you can tell he's a hard Jake, he's a, he carries the face and, uh, The. Hundreds of responses that you do over those many years. And when I, you see people in the business, people see it in his face, so well done. A pension well deserved.
Thank you, Richard, I, I have no report for the chair's report other, and I don't believe there are any topics that, um, we did not anticipate that we would need to discuss tonight. Do we have any reports from the members, Mr. Doyle?
Madam Chair, I just report that the, um, The planning committee continues to look with, uh, progress at possible sites for affordable housing in the town of Milton. That's the Mass Plan Implementation Committee, of course, and a salute to Allison Quinn for her tremendous support in the work of that committee.
Mr. Zulus?
Just, uh, briefly, Madam Chair, um, uh, last night, uh, several groups, uh, in, um, Milton and Mattapan joined together, uh, to put on a very well attended and a very well, um, Very well put together event, March for George Floyd and Justice. And, um, it, um, certainly courageous conversations deserves, um, um, a great, um, Credit for spearheading, I think, this, uh, Milton for Peace, Milton Interfaith Clergy Association. There are other groups involved that I'm sure I'm not remembering, uh, but it was a very well put together event, very well organized event. Uh, with, um, with a lot of, uh, very, very good meaning for our community and for our neighboring community as well.
And I know that you attended it and Mr. Doyle and Ms. Collins, Richard, I don't know if you were there, I was not able to attend it, but saw some photos on Facebook and it looks like it was a great event.
I was not made him, but I was very happy to see that they crossed the line when in Mattapan Square, as you remember from my time as chief. I was a strong advocate, the captain of District 3 is a Milton, for many years a Milton resident, Haji Hussain. And he led this, you know, this, some serious violence at times in that area and he had some numerous peace walks. And I was very proud of all those years to, to see many of them and I, I've come to cherish and have a great relationship with many of the business in Mattapan Square. And I was very happy that they crossed that bridge, uh, that's where I think this was a lot about our community. From one community to another, you know, it echoes the word David amongst all the things that Mr. Zulus.
Crossed it for, crossed it for a long way.
That's good too, I know where you went, I've, I've been on that park many times.
It was a long, it was a long walk, but, but a good one.
Well, thank you.
Walked back too? Did you walk back? Did you walk back?
Arthur and I, uh, walked back, uh, walked back together.
Now, thank you to our colleagues for representing town government in that, in that activity, it was a, a good event from everything I've heard. Hi, any other reports, Ms. Collins, did you have a report? Mr. Wells?
I do, Madam Chair, one sad bit of, no, it was not sad, but regretful, um. Yesterday at our MPAG board, we were notified by our longtime MPAG director, um, Michael Lynch, that he is resigning effective July 1st. He went to the private sector. Yes, that that was the react of the board and, um, I asked him, uh, before we, he left, um, If I could release this to us into the community tonight, he was, he was, he was absolutely supportive of that. As, as we all know, Michael has done some yeoman's work for MPAG and Milton Cable Access. Going back to, starting with his grandfather years ago, working his way through to taking it all as he has done and especially how he has guided. Public interaction and communication during this past year, during a year and a half during COVID. So, um, they decided yesterday to, Michael's going to put together a process both internally and outside. Uh, to begin looking for, uh, his replacement, but one good bit of news is that the board decided to, um, because there's two vacancies, to ask Michael to stay on the MPAG board, which he has agreed to do. Be very valuable to the new executive director. And not just, just as, not just a credit to Michael, but credit to his leadership, Shane, Sean, I'm sure Sean's on with us tonight, all, all the staff at MPAG. You know, they do yeoman's work in this community and. COVID has really highlighted it for a lot of us, but for those who have been out in the streets in this community, working for so many years, you get to realize it, so. Um, we'll miss him and I think, uh, on behalf of Wallace, I thanked him for all he has done for our board, not just the five of us, but all the boards he sat with over these years. Congratulations to Michael on this, on this community. A great partner for this community and a great member of this community.
Well, that, that's very surprising, it's, it's hard to imagine Milton Access TV without Mike Lynch.
I agree.
So I'm glad he's sitting on the board and, and staying involved in some capacity. Congratulations.
I know, he's actually joining his father's business, is what he's decided to do. And, uh, that's what he's going to start in July, so.
Well, congratulations to Mike. We can, we should acknowledge him, maybe, uh.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Further at the, at our next meeting or, or maybe some other forum that we can think of, maybe, maybe a town meeting in the fall.
I know, I know, I know.
Mike Lynch has contributed so much to the town over the years, it's, it's going to be hard to picture him not being in that role. him not being in that role, but, um, that's good. Thank you for letting us know that, Richard. I, I'm shocked, but, uh, happy for him.
And the, and the final point, this, this will be very special with Arthur, is, uh, I want to announce that, uh, last week we had a, a birth of this community. It's a very significant birth. Our, our resident pair of eagles that live in the Ponce River off between Granite Avenue and Milton Hill have given birth to, I've told from my, as Mr. Dennehy knows, our resident, lost a police sergeant detective observer that, uh, there is perhaps, and you know from President, because I understand the President's Golf Course is one of the best viewing points of the, of the nest, Michael, is that I believe there are as many as four new babies have been born on the Ponce River in Milton. And, and that, when you think, um, of how polluted that river was 30 years ago and almost that the environment was nearly destroyed. The fact that we have American bald eagles giving birth in a natural habitat in our community, that's pretty special. So I figured you'd all get a kick out of that. That's it, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Late for is Richard.
Do you want me to any smelt left for you, Richard?
Oh, I know it. I know it. I know it. But when they fix that, when the dam closed, when they fix that river, the shadow will be back.
They will.
Six eagles.
We've, we've covered public comment response, future agenda items. Is there anything anyone would like to put on the list? We, we are going to have the Consolidated Facilities Director come in to talk with us about the gazebo, uh, at our next meeting and to just give a general update, uh, on the projects that his department is working on. Mr. Dennehy.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I think we need to talk about the annual 41 Worf easement, uh, which expires June 30th. Um, the fall town meeting schedule, I think we should get that out there. And the treasurer, uh, is gonna come in, uh, and speak about a borrowing that needs to take place. Uh, additionally, um, equity house, possibly, uh, a grant from the Governor of Stoke Trust. And that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, if, if no one has anything else tonight, if something should come up, just please let Mr. Dennehy or, or our new Defense Assistant, Susie Stewart, no. Uh, sometime next week. Community happenings, do we have anything to announce tonight, anyone? And if not, we, executive session is next on our agenda, but I think we make sense if the board agrees to recess our meeting, go into a meeting with Governor Stoughton trustees and then come back into the select board meeting and go into the executive session and adjourn from the executive session. So, um, I, I'll move to recess the select board and to open the meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees. Is there a second? All in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so now we're in Governor Stoughton. And the only item on our agenda is a discussion about the men, uh, the state of the men's homes. We did receive an email. I think Ms. Collins had begun responding to this when she was the chair of the board. So, um, Ms. Collins, would you be interested in speaking to this as an update?
Um, well, I think Mr. Dennehy can probably speak to it best, but I, I have gotten back to the resident that contacted us about not only the state of disrepair of the tarps, um, it, it had been a lot longer than I realized.
Lightning strike in the Hillside Street area.
Um, uh, and, and not, not only that, but, but the disrepair to the tarps ended up basically on the ground. And this resident, um, has done quite a bit of cleanup, but I, I understand that there is still some, and I think Mr. Dennehy, confirmed that, uh, that the work done would also include finishing the cleanup of, of the grounds, uh, to make sure any debris is picked up. But I think you can speak.
Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Member Collins. Uh, yeah, so if you recall, I believe it was, uh, December of 2019, Governor Stoughton Trust, trustees, asked for, uh, several things. We, we, the, the barn was demolished. Um, the barn was in disrepair. Um, additionally, um, there was a lot of damage. So most of the windows were, were smashed. We found that people may have been using the building, um, for personal use. Uh, just with the state of the building, we decided it'd be a good idea to, uh, board up the windows, uh, and fix some of the window sashes. So, um, um, after that, it was decided that the roof, um, either needed to be replaced or to top. So it was topped. Uh, $2,200 was the cost of that. Um, the top, I was up there Friday, didn't get a chance to get up there today. Ms. Collins, I apologize to see what work is being done. I know Consolidated Facilities and DPW were gonna try to do their best to clean up. Um, it, the, the top is completely frayed and scattered around the property. The roof is, is completely exposed again. So I think it's, it's, uh, necessary to, to take those steps again, possibly.
And, and the cost of the tarp was fairly short dollars at the time.
It was $2,200. It was $12,775 to board up the windows and fix the sashes and, and the gutters. Uh, that work seems to be holding up well. Um, and the topping was, uh, approximately, it was exactly $2,200.
Is that the amount right now? That's a, that just, that the, uh.
No, that was the quote. That was the quote and price they, they paid, um, a little over two years ago, or just under two years.
Thoughts from the board in terms of the cleanup and, and next steps?
I'm gonna make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Arthur.
Just, um, be interested, Madam Chair, at some point, knowing what the, uh, servicing costs of that property are to the town on an annual basis.
I don't.
I don't need any answer now. I, I just would be interested in seeing.
I'm not sure there are any real costs, other than the maintenance that we did a year and a half ago.
Correct. And, and the man hours that will be spent to, to kind of pick up the, the frayed blue topping.
There you go. And that's probably going to be the most expensive part of it.
Okay, Mr. Wells.
It's not only, it's not only the dollar cost, but the, the relocation of those man hours from something else in order to do that. So you have multiple costs that are involved.
I'd be willing to make a motion. Do, do you have a dollar amount from the construction estimate? Michael, I believe you sent that. I just don't have it in front of me.
Uh, again, it was 2,200 last time. I can ask the building commissioner to, to solicit bids. He, he solicited them.
Okay, okay.
Last time.
I think, Madam Chair, we should start, at least get numbers and then have it before, so we can act on it. I mean, all you need is like one bad thunderstorm come through to do all kinds of damage on it. So I think sort of versus later is probably important.
I agree with that. So why don't we ask, I see people nodding. Should we ask the town administrator to get those quotes for the next meeting? Okay, anything else on this topic? Then, uh, if not, we'll adjourn the, do we have a motion to adjourn the Governor Stoughton meeting?
We'll adjourn the Governor Stoughton meeting.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Myself, yes. And we're back in the select board meeting and, uh, we are, I will move that we enter executive session for the following purposes pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 22F, to approve and release execu- uh, meeting minutes, executive session meeting minutes. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, this purchase exchange lease or value of real property, specifically 101 Little's Parkway, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, 41 Warf Street, believing that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. And we will not return to open session. We will adjourn from executive session.
Okay.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So we are now in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to MATV.